I've come from a different angle.
Hmm. Good tip, Brian.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. I declare the special meeting open. I would like to acknowledge that today we are meeting on traditional land with the Gabby Gabby people and I pay my respects to their elders, past, present and emerging. Note that everyone is in attendance and there are no apologies. Councillor Wegno is in attendance via Zoom. There are three items on the agenda this morning. Turning our agenda to page three, the first item is the proposed road resurfacing work on Hastings Street and Claude Batten Drive Noosa. There's also a staff recommendation on this page. Do I have a mover and a second for this?
Move.
Councillor Wilson.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Councillor Wilkie.
Oh.
Speak to my side.
Yes, please, my side.
Oh, what do I say? Um. Um, I support this motion because I think it's a good time during the Covid to get this job done and... That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any more questions?
I'd like to concur with Councillor Wilson's sentiments on this decision. I've got some questions for staff. Can you tell us a bit about the talks with the Hastings Street Association about this project? How they feel about it? And also give us some idea about traffic volumes in this precinct at normal peak times?
Through the chair. Um, yeah, sorry. Uh, councillor, we've been in heavy discussions with Hastings Street Association from the get-go. They've, uh, they were probably the main instigator in saying, you know, is there an opportune time to look at works in the precinct? And we highlighted the fact that Claude Batten Drive and, at the time, potentially Hastings Street needed to be done. And as a result, we did do some investigations and identified that they both needed to be done. So they fully support it. They're understanding of the timeframes and are on board for us to start as soon as possible.
Right, I think the other part of the question was about traffic volumes.
Yes, in regards to traffic volumes, we've got some figures there. We've, uh, got around 10,000 vehicles day movements on the, um, on the eastern side heading up to Park Road. I don't know whether we've got any more, that we're following that up, but I can take that on notice and provide that back to you. But we do know that those traffic counts were taken at peak times during tourist peak periods in, uh, over the Christmas and Easter break. And we're not experiencing any of those significant volumes at the moment.
Thank you, thank you, Brian. So just to clarify, that 10,000 traffic volumes a day from the Park Road end, is that, is it likely to be busier down the stretch of Hastings Street?
Uh, I definitely would think so, yes, definitely. It would be further, more going there because Park Road's a dead end, as well as Claude Batten. But there's more parking opportunities to the west of the Noosa Drive roundabout that intersects with Hastings Street. I didn't envisage it to be double.
Yeah. So would you say it's one of the, um, the most highly used, um, uh, roads in the Shire? How is it right?
Definitely, uh, the Hastings Street, um, is actually on a, as it is actually only at the end of, um, I suppose, it goes to a dead end. But Hastings Street segment is actually on a local roads of regional significant program. So it is, um, it has been identified as a major road for us. And it is obviously, uh, it's a bit of a jewel in the crown in regards to, um, the streetscape and the location. So yes, it is highly used.
Yeah, thank you.
Brian, could you tell us what other roads and reselling works being done, other roads around the Shire at the moment? Not just Hastings Street, but other projects you're undertaking?
Definitely, um, we've actually completed the nineteen, um, twenty program already. Um, and actually wrote those figures down, having to close my page. Uh, but we've undertaken, uh, three point, uh, four million dollars' worth of reseal work to date. Um, we only did, uh, three roads in the coastal area, which included Noosa Drive, which was a game work set required us to do because it was, uh, had reached its end of its life on the surface. Uh, we did bicentennial drive in the Sunshine Beach precinct, that school precinct there, and we did part of Marindel Drive. Uh, and then we, uh, that totaled, those works totaled 2.2 million dollars. And the remainder of the work was on 17 roads in the hinterland at 1.2 million dollars. We obviously can do more roads in the hinterland because it's a different treatment that we use. They have a different surface and we can get more kilometers and distance from that as well.
Thank you.
Um, at yesterday's services and organisation meeting, I asked whether the hinterland and in particular Pomona is included in council's high priority infrastructure projects such as bus shelter renewals and footpath and road infrastructure? And I was told they were. Um, so in front of us, I believe we've got an opportunity for council to deliver on this commitment. So my first question is, um, why has council prioritised Hastings Street and Claude Batten Drive over what I consider other high priority road resurfacing projects within the Shire? For example, roads in Pomona, Carroy, Noosaville, Noosa Springs and Marcus Beach? Um.
Okay, through the chair. Um, I guess it's come down to us is where we look at the road network from, um, uh, all the roads as a network analysis and we prioritise that based on the road hierarchy, the traffic volumes, the need to intervene to optimise the life of those roads. And Claude Batten and Hastings Street are nearing that end and it's an opportune time for us to do works because these works will actually cost us more and, uh, if we're at peak periods or during a normal, return to normal operations. And so therefore, um, this has less interruption on, um, on the Hastings Street, which is a big economic driver for us within the community. Um, and we also have not taken away from any of the work out into the hinterland and in particularly Pomona, we have programmed works and will continue to come in and intervene and maximise the resealing works in those areas as they're required.
In regards to the draft 2020-2021, um, I've been advised that this report's not been completed and that council's still finalising sections of the road. Um, again, in keeping with the new council's commitment of better community engagement, I would like to recommend that we actually ask the community for their feedback on this matter. Um, again, I understand the reasoning you just gave, um, Brian, why Hastings Street and Claude Batten Drive were chosen. Um, but again, I've got to express that, um, I don't actually agree with...
What a word, Madam Chair. I believe the quick, is there a question there or is that a statement relating to, uh, the council's opinion on where we're spending as best achieved at this point in time?
Yep. Um, so my question is, um, will the community have an opportunity in the draft 2020-2021 to be invited for their feedback, for works to be included in this draft report?
Yeah, that's a matter for council. Obviously, the budget process is separate to the decision today in terms of whether or not we bring forward this particular item. But that question about what consultation happens through the budget process is a matter for council.
With regard to budgets, Mr CEO, normally we would have a series of budget reviews going through the year. I notice this is talking about bringing forward a project from next year's, uh, budget allocation. What's the implications for this year's budget allocation if we add a $765,000 robbery sealing programme at this point in time?
Yeah, so what this report does is authorise the council to start those works now within this budget. And effectively what we're saying, if we're not then, this is a project, or this project was proposed to be in next year's budget and to bring it forward here for the reasons that Brian talked about, which was one of timing for access to Hastings Street and so on. So, um, it's not intended to then do more works into 2021. It's really a process of being approved by this council decision.
Don't believe that was the question. So, but my understanding of what your response then is that, um, we'll bring forward $765,000 out of next year's budget to this year's budget to compensate?
Yeah, it'll be funded out of the twenty, sorry, the nineteen twenty budget.
Excellent question. What's the expected time and impact on business and residents around the area for those works?
Yeah, Alex.
So, um, the works for Claude Batten Drive, uh, we've got them scheduled to take three days because effectively that's a very straight, simple run. Um, and that includes the Spitcar Park, which will also be quite a simple, um, process. However, uh, so the stretch of Hastings Street, um, it is quite finicky with the car parking sections that a Nashville paver, um, can't run through there. So they have to be sort of done by hand. So that will take, uh, I believe it'll be seven, seven days, seven working days. Yeah, no worries.
So following on from that, what's the implications as far as road closures go and access during that period?
Yeah, um, so I, we will have full traffic management in place. Um, obviously with, um, uh, whether the decision gets made today, we'll only have from today, uh, which the VMS boards are all there, ready to go. Um, so the variable message, so to communicate with the public, I believe. Um, Brian's sort of been in regular discussions with Hastings Street. So it is, it is well known that the works could potentially come. Um, but it is, um, as they are quite significant, it will involve sort of closures of those roads.
I can add to that too, if you like. Um, we are planning on just closing half of Claude Batten for the day and then working back from the river back to Hastings Street. And then it'll just be partial road closures through the Hastings Street.
Thank you, I guess that's where it was. You'll hit it.
Brian, you stated in the report that our current road resurfacing contractor has indicated his availability. There's no mention of the tender process nor the selection criteria in the report. So these are my questions. Um, did the job, the $765,000 job go out to tender? And did council include a local content selection criteria for this contract, given that it was above $750,000?
Sure. Uh, so, uh, in answering that, we went through a tender process for the contractor, um, about two years ago, um, for a lengthy period. So it was like a three-year, um, contract with multi-year options on that. And so this is, um, for them to run the program and they then, it's cost up against what we've, um, on what sections of road against, based on the unit rates that are provided in that contract. So we've gone through the whole procurement process prior and so that we don't have to go to this point when we're looking at individual sections of road to go out to tender every time. So that procurement process was done two years ago and, um, and it will be reviewed again once that period finishes.
Um, during the negotiations with the contractor, did council ask contractor to provide cost savings? Um, throw it back at him where he can offer to council, um, opportunities to save money? And, um, also did council negotiate a discount in exchange, say for instance, early payment?
Um, I don't believe we're, um, only things that we looked at in regards to cost savings because we do have a contract and an agreed rate, um, in what we're asking for here already in a contract. So they may have been done at the, uh, in the lead-up to that contract being awarded, where there may have been savings already, um, provided by the, um, the current contractor for this service. Uh, the savings that we've looked at is that we were looking at options between night and day work and timings and getting, uh, other relevant work around, um, curb and channel repairs that need to be done, uh, done. But that was about it. It was really about whether it was going to be done. Uh, there's greater savings at date doing work at daytime overnight time work.
Um, given that these works are going to be done during the Covid period and Claude Batten Drive is going to be closed, it's, to me, seems a good saving in not having, um, traffic controllers or at least council relaxing the need for as many traffic controllers. Who absorbs the benefit of that?
Um, I personally don't see too many savings with the, um, with the traffic control because we still have to turn vehicles around and it's only going to be partial closure. So it won't be full closure of Claude Batten Drive. Um, we want to be able to keep people, um, accessing the western part of, um, Main Beach as well. So, um, it may just be the sections from one part to the spit for one period or one day and then the rest of the law will be opened and business shoots. So there'd be very little savings there because we still have to have all the forewarning and, and traffic control, um, staff, uh, ensuring that people are veering off into car parks and not getting into a dead end situation and get gridlocked.
Does anyone else have any comment and questions?
Oh, I haven't got a question, I want to talk to it. Um, I thank staff for bringing forward this proposal. Um, resealing is perhaps the most significant asset management strategy we have for our roads. There's no doubt that doing it in a timely fashion extends the life and reduces the maintenance costs in a significant way. The report highlights that this was scheduled for next year. And we've heard today that, uh, we have completed this year's, um, planned works for resealing. So no one's, there's no change in priority. There's no, um, them and us with hinterland versus coast, which is a nonsense. Um, it's about doing the work that will prepare us so that we avoid the worst case scenario, which is that when, uh, the recovery of the Hastings Street accommodation precinct starts, that we then go and interrupt it with what will be a significant amenity interruption for the street. There'd be no worse outcome than doing these works when they're scheduled next year, in my opinion, because you'll have a whole lot of struggling businesses and unidaters crying foul as the media starts to report the people having difficulties, whether it's done at night or during the day. So to me, it's a perfectly logical outcome. It's, uh, we have got the ability to expend the additional, um, cost in the current year's budget without adversely affecting the bottom line and therefore I support it.
Thank you, Councillor Stockwell. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to the motion or a question?
Yeah, likewise, I support the motion. I think this is a good opportunity in a downtime period to, uh, to take advantage of the situation. Probably a little bit later, I would have liked to have done it earlier when it was even less traffic in there and we're actually closing off those raids would have been ideal and, uh, and those car parks would have been an ideal and opportune, uh, position then. But whilst the traffic flows are down, whilst volume of tourism is down, uh, this seems a logical place. I dare say that if we didn't do it at this time, when it, uh, if we tried to do it during a, uh, a more, uh, prevalent time of, uh, of interaction with tourism, that it would take even longer and be done at night and cause more inconvenience than, uh, than the opportunity this presents to us. So I commend the staff on bringing it forward. Thank you.
Councillor Wilson, Brian.
You don't have to.
You don't have to say anything.
I'm on my reply.
Um, yeah, I do support this. Thank you, staff, for the recommendation to bring this forward. I do agree that during this time of Covid is a good decision, uh, for all the things that I've mentioned here today, especially looking after a major infrastructure asset as we move forward. And I think that's a good use of finance. And I'd also like to take this opportunity to mention with regards to the hinterland. I had a meeting with the infrastructure, um, staff yesterday just to understand how roads are prioritised in the hinterland. And I'm, um, happy that we can proceed forward based on information from that to help us make decisions, um, in agreement moving forward around hinterland roads. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Wilson. We might vote on that on the recommendation on page three. Is staff all in favour? Very good, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Push it back and go.
Touch, touch where you want.
Literally.
Thanks, Brian.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Okay, moving forward, uh, the second item on the agenda is the application for a minor change to development approval to reconfigure a lot at 191 Hollett Road, Noosaville. Uh, councillors, there is staff recommendation on page eight of the agenda, which has been superseded by a further report. Uh, this updated report has been prepared as a result of legal advice recently received. Uh, the updated recommendation includes an additional condition number eight. So I'm assuming everyone has a copy of the updated report.
Uh, yes, I do.
All right, so, yeah. Has everyone got that? A judge?
Yeah.
Would anyone like to move a motion in this regard? You moved it, Brian?
I made a motion.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Thank you, thank you.
Ah, look, this is, um, a subdivision's been, uh, a long time proposed and, uh, and coming and has certainly, uh, not survived the test of time. Uh, with conditions have changed, the state regulations have changed in relation to, uh, uh, the subdivision of this nature. And I support staff, uh, position on this with regard to, uh, refusing the application.
Question, Madam Chair. On page 11 of the agenda, it indicates there's been three refusals or three applications, all of which have been appealed to this particular property. Effectively, I believe there are three current appeals. They're going to have three council decisions on this property alone. Can, um, the question I have is, if this new, this new application is refused, how will that impact on the three other appeals that are underway?
Uh, so if council resolves to refuse this application, um, it's likely the applicant will appeal this, this matter, that decision. And what is most likely to happen in court is all four appeals would be rolled together and heard in one trial. So there wouldn't be individual trials for each one.
Is that a more efficient and cost-effective way of managing an issue?
Certainly it is, uh, for both parties. It'd be more efficient if they're all dealt with together and it's typical of what the court does in these circumstances.
Thank you.
Hi, Carrie. Um, given that in refusing this application, it's likely to, that the applicant's going to lodge an appeal. Um, my question is, um, simple. Have we as a council exhausted all mediation processes? And was there an opportunity to, um, for council to have asked more from the applicant to address some of the reasons that have been listed in the refusal? Um, have we done enough to stop this from going to court?
Um, I think this matter is one that all the issues can't be resolved. We're going to be fundamentally opposed because our site, uh, because the site is zoned rural and doesn't support any subdivision on the site. It's also under the regional plan, doesn't support any subdivision under the regional plan. What we have done during, during the process is to look at potential changes they could make to reduce, um, the number of issues in the appeal, to try and minimise those that will have to be considered in a trial. Um, so that's, that's something that we have done. But at the end of the day, for this one, um, uh, there's fundamental opposition in that, you know, our scheme and our state regulations don't support any subdivision on the site. So it's difficult to resolve this one fully.
Thank you.
This was a, um, interesting one. Certainly time wasn't of the essence for these people, I feel. I mean, this development is not consistent with the South East Regional Plan. It conflicts with the requirements of the Planning Regulations 2017. It's not consistent with the Noosa's Plan Strategic Framework. There are koala habitat concerns. This proposed problems with the developments concerning risks to people and property regarding bushfires. Um, as I said, I think the real issue is this is a development which received approval in 1997, some 23 years ago. They've had ample time to develop the site. Um, clearly at no point, as I said, did the applicant see in the times of the essence. Um, and if it had have been developed, it should have been developed at that point before there were new factors, legislation and frameworks. Uh, I also know under the South East Queensland Regional Plan, the Noosa Shire population is expected to increase by 9,000 from 54,000 in 2016 to 63,000 in 2041. The number of Noosa dwellings in Noosa Shire are expected to increase by 6,400 by 2041. And the new Noosa Plan states that it has been prepared with a 20-year time horizon. So I don't think, taking all that into account, um, there seems to be no need for this development. Um, so in that, in all, considering all of those aspects, I'll high support staff recommendations.
If I may, I have, um, received some correspondence from the applicant, which I just need to make councillors aware.
Carrie, Carrie, could you please speak up? Uh, sorry, I missed that.
Sorry, Councillor Tom. I have received some correspondence from the applicant, um, just this week, um, which I need to make councillors aware of. Um, they have indicated that they're, um, as we know, their application included, um, or sought to change condition five, which is the sunset clause on the approval, which the further report deals with. Um, this, the correspondence, um, though suggests, and the recommendation to council is that, uh, we can't change condition five because it's subject to other appeals or related to other appeal matters in terms of the current period. The applicant has come forward and suggests they no longer seek to change condition five around the sunset clause. Um, talking with, uh, council's solicitor, um, I would recommend that council continue with where we're at. Um, the report was on the agenda based on the report, based on the application in front of us at the time. It's too late to be changing their application when the report's finished and on the agenda and that this matter would be dealt with during an appeal if they wish to drop off this requested change. So I'd suggest to council, council, continue on as recommended, but noting that the applicant is looking to change their application in part.
Thank you.
So just to clarify that, if the applicant wants to change the application in part, that can still take place during the, the appeal process?
Yes, they can do that through the court process.
Thank you. I'll, I'll speak.
Thank you.
Um, I mean, it was quite comprehensive in the reasons for refusal. Um, the application's for a 40-lot subdivision on land zone rural. It's outside the urban footprint of both the South East Queensland Regional Plan and the Noosa Planning Scheme. Had there not been a rezoning approval, which is no longer current, given back in 1997, I understand this application will not be able to be made under the current state and local government frameworks. The applicant has had adequate time to act on their original approval, given back in 97 and again in 2013. Uh, the subdivision has not needed to meet Noosa's population capacity of around 64,000, set by the state, which will be achieved through densification of existing urban centres close to services and transport to minimise the need for car travel. A new subdivision outside the urban footprint would not only exceed Noosa's mandated population capacity, but unnecessarily increase daily traffic on the road network. I fully support staff recommendation.
Thank you, Councillor Wilkie. Would anyone else like to speak to the motion, Councillor Stockwell?
Yeah, I will. I think, uh, Councillor Wilkie made a very important point. If this application was put to council today, we'd hand it back and say, sorry, you can't apply. It is proposing a development which is prohibited under the statutory context of the regional plan. That's really important. And to my understanding, there is very few, if none, uh, that have had the exemption from the state government required to achieve that. But it's really important to understand that under current situation, the applicant couldn't even submit an application for a subdivision outside the urban footprint, outside the rural living area that proposes rural residential development. The other thing that's really important is, when you look at the strategic framework for both the current Noosa scheme and the Noosa scheme, it highlights what council thinks is the highest and best use for this site. And it's not rural residential living. It has some very highly significant endangered vegetation on site. It has koala habitat on site and has good quality agricultural land in other areas and also underneath it. These areas that are zoned rural are best used for rural purposes. And that is conservation of the natural resource and some sort of production. Very close by, we have a typical peri-urban agricultural pursuit on similar country, which is a turf farm. There is a whole lot of other opportunities for good quality agricultural land in the cleared section, um, that all around the world are used, um, based on their proximity to market. So for me, uh, the developer is living in the 1990s when they think this is an acceptable outcome for Noosa Shire. It's not. What's acceptable is what is in the current and in the proposed scheme. And this doesn't comply in a whole host of areas as outlined for the grounds of refusal.
Thank you, Councillor Stockwell. Anyone else like to make a comment or have a question? Through to the motion? Councillor Wilson?
No, I think staff and I think, um, council's clearly articulated the reasons behind supporting staff's position on this. Uh, the, uh, uh, the application no longer, or the developers no longer appropriate under the, uh, under the scheme as it stands and, uh, under the South East Queensland Regional Plan, so.
We might put it to a vote then, uh, in regard to the staff recommendation on page eight on the revised report. All in favour? No, thank you. The last item on the special meeting agenda is on page 23. Um, I move that we go on to a closed session, please.
Oh, second amendment.
Thank you, Councillor Wilkie. Um, again, for the second time, uh, we see council finds ourselves in unusual circumstances and the potential need to close this meeting for the duration of discussions pertaining to this agenda item. This is, uh, this is unusual. And let me reassure the public that as a council, we are committed to transparency. However, is it a necessity due to the fact that the matter that we are considering is subject to current legal proceedings? Section 275.1F of the Local Government Regulation 2012 specifically allows a council to close a meeting for that purpose. Rest assured that no decisions can be made in a closed session, but it is an opportunity to get advice on legal proceedings without disclosing that advice to the other parties in the appeal. To do so would disadvantage council in those legal proceedings, which is not a sensible outcome. The decision of council will be made in the open session. Thank you. All in favour of the motion? Thank you.
Welcome back to everyone who's been waiting patiently. We've just spoken about the confidential elements concerning this item on the agenda. No decisions were made in regard to this matter, which we'll address now.
So looking at, so to give people the chance to digest it. The council note the report by the management development assessment to the special meeting dated 13th of May 2020 regarding application number MCU 20, number 28 and reconfiguration of a lot 2005. For a development permit material change of use detached house and reconfiguration of lot one lot into two situated at 20 Midi Street Noosa Heads and refuse the application for the following reasons. Number one, the proposal is not consistent with the Noosa Plan's reconfiguration a lot code as the proposed lots are not suitable for their intended use as they do not contain house side areas 100% above the 1% AEP flood level with lot one subject to significant flooding from an overland drainage path. The proposed lots are not consistent with the Noosa Plan's, Noosa Head's locality code as a proposal will not maintain the safety of people and will not achieve a high level of residential amenity for residents given the overland drainage paths that traverses the property. Number three, the proposed development will cause off-site flooding impacts contrary to overall specific outcome O2 of the detached housing code and specific outcomes O19 and O2O of the reconfiguring a lot code. Number four, the proposed reconfiguration will ultimately place more people within an area which has a clear risk of flooding compromising people's safety. Number five, the proposed lots do not comply with the Noosa Plan's reconfiguring a lot code and Noosa Head's locality code as lots are located within 50 metres of Noosa National Park which is mapped as having very high to high values under the biodiversity assessment version 4.1. Further, the site is a part of a wetland complex that is in proximity to a record of an endangered Oxalean pygmy perch and vulnerable honey blue eyes aquatic species whose range may include the development site. Number six, the proposed new dwelling has, house is fully located within a palestrine wetland and is a groundwater dependent ecosystem and therefore is inconsistent with the overall outcome sought by the detached housing code 14.51.2. A and H as a land is not suitable for a detached house and the proposal will adversely impact on the site and surrounding areas' environmental values, including environmentally sensitive areas. Number seven, the proposed detached dwelling and second lot would increase the potential development footprint and allowable site density exacerbating known impacts and resulting in additional impacts on the amenity of local, of the locality contrary to specific outcome O26 of the detached housing code. Number eight, the proposal is contrary to the draft Noosa Plan as it proposes to establish a lot and a house site within a groundwater dependent ecosystem which is defined as an ecologically important area. Specifically, A, the development fails to meet the outcomes of section 9.4.8 Water Quality Code and Drainage Code in that it does not protect ecology and groundwater dependent ecosystems nor maintain fish passage. B, the development poses drainage lines and does not propose to reinstate or re-vegetate disturbed areas and is therefore inconsistent with specific outcome in PO5. Number C, the development is not designed to be located, designed, constructed and operated to protect and enhance environmental values and water quality of waterways, wetlands, lakes, groundwater and drainage systems and therefore is inconsistent with outcomes PO6, 11, 12 and 13 relating to stormwater quality and protection of receiving waters. D, the development proposes new infrastructure excavation and fill in a groundwater discharge zone and is therefore inconsistent with outcomes AO 13.1 and 13.2. Number E, as such the development fails to meet the overall outcomes for the coastal communities section 7.2.6.2 as it is neither cited nor designed to protect ecologically important areas and retain landscape elements. I note following in B there that the following reasons are for adopting this decision. One, the Noosa Plan does not support the establishment of a separate allotment within 50 metres of the national park. Two, the proposed lot is flood affected. Three, the proposed development will cause off-site flooding impacts. And four, the proposal does not comply with the outcomes of the Noosa Plan and the draft new Noosa Plan. Thank you, councillors. I don't think I need to say much more than what the conditions of refusal are. I wrote down two different dot points. One dot point simply said planning principles and that's what this is. This motion to refuse is about standing up for the principles inherent within the Noosa Plan and standing up for those which we have foreshadowed in the new Noosa Plan. It's about putting, the applicant asks to double the current entitlement by adding a second lot and a second detached dwelling in a highly constrained site. In my opinion, for all the reasons listed in the motion, should not proceed. And I think I ask for your support based on those grounds.
This is a complex matter and the question to refuse or approve the application is a difficult one. What concerns me is how What concerns me is how flood immunity has been addressed in this proposal by filling and the fact that the proposal simply does not comply with the outcomes of the new Noosa Plan or the current Noosa Plan. To therefore approve the application would be contrary to our planning scheme and create problematic precedents. This does not sit well with me. My other serious concern is about the extension dwelling in Mini Street and its questionable approval by private building certifier. The structure had breached building approvals, was built in a sensitive environmental area and almost 100% of the block is in the flood plain, yet it was approved. Over the last three weeks, I've been approached by residents who have had extensions approved by private certifier and yet refused by council. This is quite worrying. Is it because our planning scheme is too complex and that some building certifiers simply have difficulty in identifying the requirements that relate to the building applications that they are assessing? And is there an opportunity therefore to address this in the new Noosa Plan? Or is it the case that we just require that some, not all certifiers, some certifiers look to undertake extra training and education to ensure that they do not overlook local government requires, requirements relating to sites of proposed building work? The question I think that the community needs an answer to today is how did all this happen without council's knowledge?
I'm going to support the motion before us for all the reasons that the motion outlines but also because we're known for defending the Noosa, the Noosa planning scheme. And one of the elements of the planning scheme that this proposal does not adhere to, that's not mentioned is that both lots, in a battle axe nature of which they are, neither one meets the minimum lot size for battle axe blocks in the Noosa Plan. And that if this development application as a subdivision came before us in its own right today, there would be no way that we would support it under the new Noosa Plan. So I cannot support the ways and means in which this, this development proposal has come before us to be accepted.
Thank you. I don't support councillor Stockwell's recommendation. This is a really difficult one. This is a head and a heart one. My heart says absolutely support it. My head says no and this is why. The application in front of us today when assessed against state planning policy and planning regulation 2017 is consistent. The reconfiguration of the lot has no effect on the flooding behaviour of the land. We have to realise that there is a dwelling already there. There is nothing we can do about that. We are not looking to develop or approve a development that hasn't come up. This is something that has, is sitting there. It's not coming across our desk as a green space. The reconfiguration of the lot has no effect on the flooding behaviour of the land. The lot sizes are 711 square metres and 662, not unusual for that area where some of the lots are 350 square metres in that area. The engineering solutions proposed by the applicant will improve the existing flood hazards on the land and reduce off-site impacts. Look, I'm convinced that the proposals put forward to deal with the issues by the applicant would achieve a good outcome without having to go to court and incur unnecessary costs. And I think that comes back to the head part of this. This is if we go to court or this progresses, it will incur potentially significant costs to our community. And I'm hoping that a negotiated settlement could eradicate the need to having to spend further rate payer money. I do though acknowledge what councillor Stockwell said, that it is very important to set a precedent in supporting and defending the new Noosa Plan. But in this case, I'm looking at it from a rate payer cost perspective. Thank you.
I acknowledge the comments that have been said before about the complexity of the case and also the need to take rate payer, rate payer funds into consideration. It's not our money, it's not the council's money, it's rate payer's money. It's always a very important consideration. If it does go to court, there's always an opportunity for a mediated outcome. It's also very important that long term the rate payers have the confidence that they have a council that will always defend the principles of the planning scheme. That, I know many of us campaigned on that, to always defend Noosa Plan scheme where appropriate. I'm personally, for me, this particular application needs to be refused because the, not only the proposed lots flood affected and of course flooding impacts either side of the property, the existing dwelling that's there. But it's basically a subdivision and a house in a wetland and I would not like to see the Noosa council get in the practice of giving approvals to dwellings or subdivisions that are essentially in wetlands. I know we're dealing with a difficult situation with an existing dwelling there and perhaps engineering solutions can be reached. But it's contrary to the, not only to principles of the new Noosa planning scheme, but the existing Noosa planning scheme. And for that reason, I find it very difficult to approve this particular application. It is difficult. I respect the mayor's comments about being frugal with rate payers money. But in this occasion, I think it's definitely worth refusing because of the message it sends to the development industry generally that some elements will, that will go through the, just sends the right message that this is a council that will always defend with planning scheme where appropriate.
Any questions?
Just quickly.
What about?
Tom?
Tom, sorry.
Clarity with decisions saves money in the long run. We look for a clear rule.
Thank you. You might vote on that. Anyone else?
I'll oppose.
Oh, we're writing replies? Sorry councillor.
I think it is really important and it's clear that we've had an extended period in closed session to look at those balancing arguments and it's important to understand that there are, there are balanced issues to be dealt with here. I do think it's really important to clarify that what we're looking at is an existing single dwelling that had recently had a large extension into a very low section of the lot. Councillors previously had reports in the last term of council that raised issues that they, that their staff suggestion was it was being used as two separate dwellings and therefore in breach of the scheme which resulted in the initial subdivision application. So this is a development application to double the number of houses permissible on the existing lot. And there's a range of other development provisions that may flow on if there's two lots created. It's also important to clarify that the 350 square metre lots in an area are part of a group title scheme. So it's, it's not comparing apples with apples because if you're in a group title scheme, you have your house lot and you have the share of the common property. And it's a way to actually retain more values in that common property. So it's, it's important to clarify that. But on the whole, I think, you know, it is a case of making the hard decision to refuse this development to, in order to hold the principles of the planning scheme in high regard.
You might vote on it. All in favour of councillor Stockwell's motion against?
Tom.
Why is that?
Go ahead and check councillor Baker, whether it was for the motion or the refusal.
I support Stockwell's motion.
Yeah, me too. Just report it. Just report it. If you wrote your ticket, fine, go with it.
Okay, thank you very much. That is all we have today. Our next ordinary meeting is on the 21st of May. Thank you everyone.